You'll move it up. A couple of times. Right late in the day. So that he said, tell him to stay back there for the rest.
Yes, I'm kidding.
I have to leave now, so.
Okay.
Do um, do the eyes. He's going to just go use the.
So good time to tell you.
Okay, it's 5:30 according to Verizon time, so we're going to call this work session special meeting to order. I would encourage you to turn your cell phones to silent or vibrate, and then let's please all stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Albi.
Here.
Councilmember Myers.
Here.
Councilmember Rowe.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember Strebe.
Here.
Mayor Lozio.
Here.
I need approval for tonight's agenda. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Well, I allow time on our agenda for comments from citizens. If there's anyone that wants to fill out a sheet and give it to Amanda, we'll be glad to entertain your comments at the appropriate time if it's on something on tonight's agenda. We'll also give you time at the end of the meeting to make any public comments about anything. Is there anyone that wants to come up and let us know if there's an item? Just give it to Amanda, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move right into our items then. The first item that we're going to discuss and visit about tonight has to do with the Blackbird Investment Group from Des Moines to talk about the Vogel Building on Alta Vista. We have with us a number of members, but Ryan Doyle is going to take the lead, so Ryan, welcome to Otomoa, and we're glad to hear from you, so you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Ryan Doyle with Blackbird Investments out of Des Moines. I'm here with my brother and partner, Justin Doyle, as well as Matthew Cohen and Andy Lorenson, who are the architects on this project. I wanted to thank everyone for giving us the opportunity to come and give a long overdue update on the project. Looking back, it is over two years now officially since we first met down here on that super, super cold February morning and walked the building. So I'm going to talk a lot tonight, some new stuff, some old stuff, in the sake of cutting me off and allowing me a chance to breathe. Interrupt at any point, please, if you'd like more elaboration on something, if something's not clear, or I'm just boring you. First, I'd like to kind of talk about the project as it stands today, and I'd like to kind of rely on Matt here to give a brief overview on what the project looks like from a design perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Very glad to be here to present the progress on the Vogel Building, the former St. Joe's Hospital. We're very excited about the project. And architecturally speaking, there's nothing more exciting than working on a project of the stature in a beautiful neighborhood, in a beautiful community. We're very excited to be here. As the project stands today, and I'll just direct you over to the boards to your right, I think most of you have probably already seen these boards, and in large part, the project is, or as it was in the early stages. The project, which is of course two buildings, the large main hospital building and the secondary, what was a nurses dormitory building, are both included in the project. However, the nurses' building component is now, will now not be renovated for apartment units, but it will be stabilized and maintained in its current state for future development. So that building will stand. The total number of units, however, has not changed, so we are able to accommodate 74 apartment units ranging in size from about 750 square feet all the way up to 1,500 square feet in one, two, and three-bedroom units in the main primary building. The projects, we've been through a long process with the State Historic Preservation Office. It will be a historic tax credit project, and so we've been following the guidelines of the National Park Service as administered by the State Historic Preservation Office. So all of those elements have been introduced in the projects as they've been requested, and we're on track there with our, what's called a part two, has been submitted for state and federal approval. That's a kind of the big overview on the project. A couple other things, amenities on the site include a pool and some covered parking in a new structure that's just north of what will be the pool structure between the two buildings.
Thank you, Matt. As you said, it's currently 74 units, makes a one-bedroom and two, excuse me, one, two, and three bedrooms. Our budget, as it stands today for the project, is just over $22 million. This is obviously up quite a bit from what we originally expected on the project. As we dig into the project, at first, we anticipated a large portion of these problems, but it's an incredibly complex building. It's kind of the more layers of the onion we peel back, the more we find, which works to our favor and works against us, obviously, from a price of renovations standpoint. The upside is, the renovation itself is going to be all the more better for these complexities and this individual character that this building brings. It's an incredibly ambitious project. We knew this from the get-go. It's a large building, 122,000 square feet on 10 acres. It's a beautiful site. It's an expansive site. Because of that as well, it requires quite a bit of work to turn the site into something that fits the new concept of the building as a residential structure. In addition to that, there is massive amounts of internal demolition that are required for renovating the building. We're budgeting just under $1 million for interior demolition alone in the structure. Since we met last time, we've been working very hard from a design standpoint, from a financing standpoint. The latest development, as Matt discussed, is we believe we now have the final iteration to the historic state tax credit application process in. There's been ongoing negotiations with them. Things have changed. We believe for the better. They are getting more and more particular about what takes place in the building, on the side, everywhere, to ensure that it retains all of its historic character. From a financing standpoint, we are working hard on this. The particular nature of this building and location caused quite a few complexities and challenges from a financing stack. Again, we anticipated lots of this going forward, but it is more involved than we believed it would be originally. We've assembled quite the financing stack from different sources for the project, between state historic tax credits, federal historic tax credits, workforce housing tax credits, construction loan, incentive abatement loan, utility rebates, energy efficiency rebates, sales tax rebates, and community sources. So we believe we've got these pieces together at this point in a solid piece. We continue to work forward on them and putting them together. Like I said before, it's an ambitious project, just based on the size and scope of what needs done. That has caused the budgeting and design process to take longer than we anticipated. This now officially is our second longest-running project at Blackbird, with the honor of first going to Fort Des Moines on the south side of Des Moines, which we started almost exactly one year prior to this one, and we are just entering construction, hopefully in the next month or so on that one. So it's taking a long time. The nature of this, being what it is, this isn't an anomaly for a project like this that requires such a complexity of sources and such a complexity of design. Financing, again, we've dealt with quite a few obstacles on this. The largest is that a residential renovation of this scale and type doesn't exist in the area. Obviously, this makes getting an appraisal difficult on the property when you're looking for good comps and other residences in the area. They simply don't exist. So that's added one more layer on top of it, getting our financing partners on board with, hey, there is a market for this in Des Moines, or, excuse me, in Otomoa. It's not just Des Moines that people are looking for premium housing and this sort of living. Talking about future steps in the project, we are continuing design work. We hope to hear back on our state tax credit, which is a large portion, about a $4 million portion of the project, hopefully in about 30 days or so. We continue the financing work, firming up financing on it. We are discussing with, in discussions with many community area organizations, with the Legacy Foundation, with John Deere, with Indian Hills College. All of these community players have been instrumental and will continue to be instrumental in getting this project over the finish line and getting it into construction. In the coming weeks, we hope to have an updated project timeline. It's our, we anticipate within 30 days or so, things should be firmed up, and then I'd love to get back down here and really dig into brass tacks about exactly when construction is going to start on this, but we are, we're in the final stretch here. So at this point, I'd like to, you know, take comments and questions.
Okay, and since this is a work session, we'll be a little bit more informal tonight, and I would encourage council to ask anything that's on their mind, and I did send out a memo to the council some, after you and I talked, Ryan, and I think we've touched on the basic points that you've mentioned, but I wanted the council, especially since we have a couple of new people on the council this year, to be sure that they understand and feel comfortable asking anything about the project. So council, anybody wants to bring up an issue? Bob?
Well, Ryan, since I've been involved with this really in the beginning as you've started, and still so excited about it, but that was going to be my question, was your timeline, and you think that's pretty realistic, that within 30 days, you'll have an updated timeline?
I think in 30 days, yes. That's what we're targeting for our updated timeline, as we hear back from the state on our major tax credits.
Ryan, maybe another clarification, both for our audience and for people at home. The hospital has rented out some of the space on the parking lot, and that's not anything to do with you folks. Water Works is that staging area. It looks a little trashy right now, and we appreciate that. That's part of the progress, of tearing out old water pipes and storing them until they can haul them off. So I just want to clarify, that has nothing to do with your project.
No, it doesn't. And, you know, the worse it looks now, you know, it'll just make the end project all the better.
Have you started taking bids yet on the construction process from the actual construction companies?
Yes, so Ball Team Construction is our general contractor on the project, and they are still involved. We are gearing up once we finalize the design with the second round with the state to do one final round of hard bidding. Between the previous round that we did in the middle of last year and this, we've, we think that we brought on a couple of other smaller subcontractors on board that should be able to help us realize some large efficiencies in this project that we've realized in some of our other projects we're doing. So our hope is to bring the project cost down substantially from where we're at today to $22 million, which just helps us in the financing, in the financing stack.
Would you add a little clarification, because I know, again, I've had the advantage of visiting with you, but in talking to other contractors, both here locally and in the area, it seems like a lot of projects are coming in way over original estimates, and you and I shared a figure. Do you care to share that?
Yeah, this is absolutely kind of epidemic in the construction industry right now. We're seeing this across the board on all of our projects. Original estimate on this project was about 25% to 35% less than where we're at now, just on the hard construction costs.
What's driving that cost up?
I think the major cause of it is just with all the construction going on, people can be picky and choosy about what projects they take right now. It's a boom, which is good on one side, which allows us to have a market for a project like this. Everyone's doing well, but at the same time, general contracting firms are doing well, and subcontractors are doing well, and now they don't have to slash their costs like they would have maybe 10 years ago.
Thank you.
Matt? Ryan, it's good to have you back again with positive news like this, because we kind of, you know, with the length of time not hearing anything, we really didn't know what to expect, and it's good for people to hear this. The question, with scaling back a little bit and going through this, the financial issues and stuff, and having things come in over bid and stuff, which is normal in a lot of projects, we as a city go through that on things too. Is the final design going to look a lot different, or is a thing going to be tweaked, or are we expecting a major difference in what we were, you know, the plans that were submitted first?
No, there won't be any, there won't be any major differences. As we work through the process, we have different things, different requirements, internal design, the way we treat corridors, the way we treat the ceilings and units. A large portion of this is driven by the historic requirements. For instance, I think it was up in the air whether or not there would be replacement windows put in the building. Now we're going to be required by the state, it looks like, to individually restore all of these original windows back to, back to the way they were. It's these sort of strings that kind of make the project take a little longer, but it's a large amount of money that flows into the project from these sources. The requirements that the state and the federal government put on it from a historic perspective also serve as kind of an outside, an outside check on making sure that the project conforms to that original idea. So we don't have that much leeway on where we can go from that.
Thank you.
I don't have any specific questions, but thank you for being here tonight with a positive report, and I'm very happy about that.
Absolutely. It's great to be back here. We, Blackbird, are incredibly positive about this project. We are 100% committed to it. Like I said, this, I know it seems like a long time, and it is a long time, but for a $22 million historic rehab of a adaptive reuse of a hospital into an apartment building in a non-major metro area, I think this is typical. This is, like I said, what we're seeing in Des Moines. There are projects of this complexity that simply take a long time to get off the ground, and this is one of them. We at Blackbird have spent hundreds of hours and hundreds of thousands of dollars on this project at this point. We've generated probably about a 75% construction set. It's that giant ream of paper over there, and then you guys didn't truck down all the binders that go along with that from specs, but if nothing else, we've made a lot of pretty drawings. But, no, like I said, we are incredibly committed to this project, you know.
You might hold that up, Andy.
Folks.
The drawings are one thing, but in addition to the drawings, the entire building has been assessed for hazardous materials. There is a plan in place for abating those hazardous materials. All of those go in separate reports, so the work that's been done far exceeds just the architectural design work, and making this project very much shovel-ready once all the pieces fall together, so.
Am I correct, too, that, at least in a phone conversation with you, Ryan, the State Historic Preservation Office has gone through a number of changes personally in terms of personnel, and then some of the rules have changed, which is typical for government?
That's definitely been the case, and I know it's been driving Matt and every other architect in town kind of nuts that works on projects of this type. Real high-level backstory is, it used to be relatively easy to secure these credits, where you draw a couple of pictures and, you know, send it in, and they rubber stamp them, send them to the federal government, another rubber stamp, and you're good to go. Now there's a massive amount of scrutiny, and not just scrutiny on the projects, but also there's been a lot of turmoil in the process itself, resulting in a large backlog of projects that still have to get through the queue. That has the effect of making other pieces of the financing component skittish about what's happening with these credits. The good news is that appears to have all been worked out at this point. As of probably about a month ago, there appears to be a process in place to clear out the backlog and keep moving forward. What we need more than anything else is just the reliable process that we know what we need to meet, and not this kind of black box that has unfortunately kind of been the case for a while. But things are moving forward with that. It's all good news from here on out.
Do you mind if I ask, looking forward to when this project's complete, what is the target market that you're looking to attract to these apartments?
I think we've identified quite a few different areas of clientele that this caters to, everywhere from young professionals, engineers at John Deere, to empty nesters, to students at the college, to surgeons coming in from the hospital looking for a premium housing component, maybe want to get to know the area before purchasing a house in it. I think that the benefits, which we've discussed before to the housing market in Otomoa, I think that this really serves an area that has been underserved historically, where there are many people who are looking for this type of product that it simply doesn't exist on this scale.
So what income level are you thinking?
So I think income will be all over the board from a dollar standpoint for the units themselves. We haven't, we haven't fully fleshed that out. It'll be somewhere in the, I would say, $900 to $1,300 a month range, depending on the size and the amenities of the specific unit and stuff like that. I think the project as a whole has still the amazing amenity stack with the fitness area, with the pool, with the restored chapel that we're repurposing into a community room, which we're incredibly proud that that is still a big part of this project. I've said this before, but I think the, one of the big downsides of moving into an apartment building is the lack of some large meeting place to get together with your family, to have a birthday party or a Super Bowl party or something like that. This is really going to serve this purpose. It's going to allow this sort of congregation area that I think will really set this apart. It has the pool deck. Some units have private patios, and everyone, you know, if you're familiar with the building, it just, it sits over the, you know, this beautiful neighborhood of just an expanse of trees, you know, and basically, you know, parkland. So it's just amazing views throughout the building, which has been part of the bane of us, is there are, how many windows in this building?
571 open.
Right. We joke we need to start our own window company. So that's a difficulty from when you're trying to, when you're trying to pay for these renovations, but the benefit is, every unit in this building has amazing views, hands down. So it's a double-edged sword.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? I just felt it was really important, Ryan, to get you back here, because I've kept in touch with you by email and phone, but I think it's good for the council and for the public to know that you're still committed, that it's still a doable project, and we're excited to see you continue with it.
Absolutely. This stage in the process, it's largely behind the scenes. It's financing stack, it's negotiations with the various tax credit agencies. Things are moving forward, and like I said, this has been an overdue update, and I can't wait to get back here again to give you the next set of updates.
Two things we ought to properly, at least I'm going to prompt to get out on the table. One of the issues on the original application we approved last year, we talked about 70 units, and that was in our PUD requirement, and Ed's on vacation right now, so he's not here to address it, Ed Corton, our city planner. So if you change that, we might have to do an amendment or an adjustment, and I just want to be, have all the cards on the table.
Absolutely. We were, oh, sorry.
You're aware of that, yeah.
I was saying, we wanted to wait until we arrived on a final unit count through the SHPO process before we re-engaged in that and only had to come back to that one more time, but yes, definitely, we're aware.
Okay. And then lastly, is there anything we as a city can do to assist you in making this project come to fruition and get to be a reality?
I think, I think your continued support and the continued support of community is all working in the right direction. As financing continues to firm up, I love the ongoing discussions about everything that everyone can be doing, so I'd love to continue these discussions in the future. But I think that's, I think you guys are doing, it's, I can't express my gratitude enough about the reception we've had in Otomoa, both from the city, but from the community, but from area organizations. It's been incredible.
Well, I think anytime we can educate the public, it's better than having this question mark out there, so hopefully our media and people watching at home tonight on TV can understand that this is a normal process when you have a project this big, no comparisons in southeast Iowa, overages on estimates for budgets and construction, and we want you to do it the right way, so we appreciate your effort in being very conscientious about it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anything further?
Mayor, I just would like to follow up on your two points. Otomo Regional Health Center still owns the property. And then, secondly, when you mentioned the subcontractor to Water Works, having materials they'll be working with, as well as old pipe and everything they've taken out, that same subcontractor will be going down North Court from Alta Vista, I think, to the highway. So when we see additional residue stuff, it's not Blackbird. It is, it is a subcontractor that's using that as a staging. So thank you for that clarification.
Yep. When we, when we begin on the project, believe me, you won't be able to miss it. It's a, it'll be a large-scale endeavor.
Okay, we'll have you back again and keep us in the loop, and anything we can do to help you. Ed Corton's our contact person on this project, so I'll work with Ed. Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For all of you. Okay, item number two is discussion of 2016 street projects, and I think Larry Seals is going to, Director of Public Works is going to give us an overview, and I see some material on our countertop here. Larry, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Just jump straight into a PowerPoint that we put together for each of the streets, and just keep it, like you said, very informal, and when you have specific questions.
Some of the general questions that we are typically asked is, how do we select the street? A lot of times, what we have to do, or what we actually do, is we look at the long-range plans for the citywide sewer separation. We look at those areas, if we know we're going to be in in five to 10 years, we have to evaluate the condition of the streets, and are we going to disturb them in the separation? So we have to at least go far enough forward to know generally what we're going to do in those areas, and a lot of times, if we don't have that completely done, then we will select an area outside. We use traffic counts where they exist, or if we have to go get them ourselves. We look at the existing condition, the remaining useful life. Sometimes you can go in on these projects if you catch them at the right stage, and you can bring them up to a standard for less money and still get another 15 years out of them. Then we look at annual maintenance needs. How often are we out there? What's the subbase doing? And then the condition of the existing utilities, which means that we will have to go in, and we look at the sewer condition, what kind of break history do we have from water mains? Does it have an existing storm system? Do we have to look at it, too? Some of the streets, we've done the handout that kind of outlines which streets are going to be used or done under the expanded street use program. The first one would be Greenwood Drive. It's probably going to start at Wildwood Drive if we don't get all the water main work done. Currently, Water Works is up doing some main work, doing some street crossings and stuff ahead of the overlay. You can see through the pictures that the existing mat is alligator-cracked pretty much entirely up through this corridor. This street carries a considerable amount of traffic for the nursing home area. This is just another shot of the same street. You can see it's an edge of pavement or what's called a rural section, open ditch-type area. Chester is very similar. You can, the proposed work, again, is four-inch overlay. It's.
Larry, you said to ask questions as we go, is that?
Except for you. Yeah.
Pardon me? Oh, thank you. On Greenwood Drive, are you going to mill that up and churn that up and then lay it, the base back down, and then pave over it, or are you paving over what we see there?
We're going to pave over that. We've done different things, where we've done the mineral stabilization on top of. If you do a foot of mineral stabilization, you get approximately an inch. We've upped the overlay from an inch to four inch, from three inches to four inches to get that extra inch. On something like that, that's fairly evenly alligator-cracked, we've had pretty good success of not having reflective cracking like you do on PCC pavement. We don't want to go in and take a lot of milling off and straighten it up with a profile mill, because you remove that. mill because you remove that structure that already exists.
Okay. And it appears like in looking at Wildwood, you're going to go 300 feet east of, or Greenwood's, excuse me, 300 feet east of Wildwood. That's back on the PC paving portion?
And that kind of depends how Waterworks ends up with theirs. There's probably about that much distance where they've had a lot of breaks. So we're working with them. If not, we're going to start on the west edge of Wildwood and go out to Skyline. And then we might have to come back and do a short section.
Thank you.
Chester is very similar. These are some of the streets that we were able to get through last year, evaluate the sewer. There was some work that we had to do on Chester. Again, you can see that it's really beyond any type of patch and it's at a point it just needs resurfaced. Lamborn, again, earlier this year, we let a separation project where they'll come in, separate the storm off the sanitary. It'll go to open ditch and then come up through and do this entire street.
Larry, could I back up a second? I'm sorry. I just was curious on Chester and then the piece we're going to do on Ferry, the millions of dollars in the projects for sewer separation and everything on Chester and Ferry. So those pieces we're doing now, does that pretty well complete the work, the Chester-Ferry work or not?
No. This part of Chester actually starts at Wildwood and goes to Skyline. This is the part that's almost out to the nursing home. It carries, Chester especially is the cut through. You see a lot of people coming through from the south of town that'll come by the park and then uses this as a main entrance.
Okay. So it's not parked. Okay. Thank you.
This is a small cul-de-sac. There's really, over the years, it used to have a defined cul-de-sac that's been removed. We've got a lot of water problems on a couple of the houses. There's really not a lot we can do at this point. The existing overlay has deteriorated to where really there's nothing left but some gravel base. So we'll come in and clean that up. This one will get some milling, some additional work to feather the edges in. It's kind of one of those little pocket areas we have. Cass Street, on that cut through, probably I think it's been about three years ago, we actually went in and graded the existing asphalt off because it got so rough. We're going to have some patchwork ahead of time in this area and then we'll overlay it to get some sort of writing surface back. It's just another view of the same street. That was just a real quick cap. I know some of the questions that I've had from council members is what are we doing with the additional gas tax after they raised it? One of the things, working with finance, of course, the state estimates that you'd get about $121 per capita, per person. We don't use that number. Bob, over the years, has made an estimate that it never really generates what they originally estimate. So we'll use a couple bucks less or about 119. What that'll do is end up, we'll target about 400,000. All that money goes into just the road use fund balance. And when you look at the total road use, generates around 2.975 million. But there's a lot of money and different revenues that come into that fund to support not only public works, but their equipment, material, labor that we do in-house also. I guess that's the real quick one. I mean, you've got the estimated cost for each of those streets. We went ahead and included some of the other projects that carried over. That's one thing about this fund. It's specific. If you don't use it this fiscal year, it simply stays in the fund balance and rolls over. What we've done in the past, because these are kind of moving numbers of what we actually end up at the end of the year, we might come back and do a second selection where we pick up some smaller projects is how we've handled this over the last probably five years.
I've got three more questions if I'm not hogging the... Briefly, can you tell us, East Main from Jeff to Vine, that was in the works two couple years ago. Where's that at?
That's currently, we're getting ready to select an engineering. That's one of what we're going to do in-house. That was some of the additional duties that we've taken on as far as all the building evaluation, CIP. We're going to go out to a consulting firm on that. We also pushed that back a year to try to coordinate that with the 200 and 300 blocks of the downtown. Originally, that would be a perfect area to separate, but without doing the other two blocks, we'd have to recombine it, which was kind of the plan. Now that we're going to do the other ones and we've kind of went into that design phase or getting ready to, we want to coordinate that all together for the utilities are replaced.
So that's 2017?
Yes.
One other thing that I've had a lot of people approach me on, and I don't know where this is at, it may be in the back of your mind, but I'm thinking of the Canteen Alley. That is a heck of a draw from people out of town when they come home to go down there, plus our own local people, and it is in terrible shape. I know you had a sewer failure down there and I think you probably maybe got that fixed or it's on your schedule. Would this be something like this that could be added in the near future? So...
These are the ones where at the end of the year, if the revenue actually exceeds what we estimated it to be, that we come back on a second selection. And we actually did look at all the alleys in the downtown. We were looking at some different options, possible grant funding for green alleys, similar to what Dubuque used when we went up and toured their area. We used that money in a different location. And we've had several different things that we've not flushed completely out as far as how to fund that.
Okay. And I've got one more and then I'll give up. In talking to some of the neighbors, like on the west end of Fillmore Street, and I'm talking about the portion that runs from Wayne to Green, those folks for 15 years that I know of on the west end of that street have mentioned they'd like to have that overlaid because it's rather rough. And I drove through it. It appears like most of the curb is in real good shape. There are some broken pieces that have toe stubbers or whatever, yea high that would have to be patched. But personally, that's another one I'd like to see on the list in the near future.
That's one we'd have to look at, Skip. We actually went through and started roughing in what we need and I'll back up a little bit. When we done our initial need study, we should be doing somewhere around $8 million a year in street replacement to actually catch up in a 20-year period. On this round, we went out and we had $20 million worth of needs. So then you have to kind of go through that criteria I'm talking about. There's a lot of streets in the city that are deserving of replacement. Somehow we have to thin them out through a selection process. As I started out, through the long range plan and traffic, sometimes those streets do wait a long time.
Yeah. And I was just going to mention too, on Fillmore, the streets around it, you recently repaved and this would tie that whole neighborhood together as complete. So, thank you.
Yeah. If I may, Skip, since I usually do agree with you, I'd like to echo that, Larry, we just had guests come to Atomoa on the train and one of the highlights was going to the Canteen. And you do almost take your life into your own hands in that alley. So I would echo Skip's thoughts if the money, if you could find it for that one. And I appreciate that you're looking at other alleys, but that one is used an awful lot as a...
I might interject here, just a piece of information, that there's another group looking at that same alley to do some work. And the principal insurance company got a grant this year to do some work behind that one step, first step building there. And so there is some thought about extending that down past the Canteen. And there are some actual drawings being developed and they're going to share those with Larry and his department because I think it's one of those quick wins that we could get done if we could get enough funding from grants, IEDA, city road use and so forth so that we can put it together. So we'll have more discussion about that.
Good, good. Thank you. The other thing I'd like to point out to the council, and I brought it up here tonight, not just for a piece of show, it's really worth taking a look at. This is a historical summary of all the streets that have been done in the last 10 to 15 years. And I took some time and I want you to know that in the past five years, just the past five years, we have spent $19,700,000 on just street reconstruction. And every year is a little different. I mean, 3, 5, 5, 3, 2 million, 3 million, 1 million, 4 million. And that's just contracted work because our staff also did some in-house work too for another $200,000. So I think, as Larry pointed out, and I know it was a rude awakening for me that we need to do $8 million a year for streets to keep up. We have, what, 159 miles of roads?
Close to that.
And I know from talking to other mayors and other city council, we're not alone. Many of the streets in other, their cities are dealing with potholes, freezing and thawing. We are going to continue to work on streets, but we've got to have a rationale and we've got to follow our procedure and knock them off the best we can. And I want to make the comment too, I took the big map and it's downstairs if you want to look at it, but if you look at this map and blow up, I thought the distribution of street repair was pretty much 50/50. It might be 55, 45, but it really covered the entire city and divided by the river. So there was no preference, north side, south side, east side or west side. I think it really did a fair job of taking care of a lot of the projects. And I give our staff credit for timing the street construction with all of the utility work we've been doing because there's no sense going in and fixing a street and a half, two months later go in and tear it up because of fails or a water main fails. So I think they've done a great job. It's just, we're all, all cities in Iowa are dealing with infrastructure problems and we have very few funds left to pay for that, which is something that we're struggling with all cities.
And if I could follow up on that, Mayor, just as you said, that same visitor from Chicago that was here, that was one of my explanations to them. We struggle, having been a city of 40,000, now being 25,000, still trying to pay for that infrastructure that in fact was set up for 40,000 people.
Mr. Mayor, I've got just one question. Larry, somewhat to follow up on what you talked about, the funding sources. I know for certain, certainly one of them you mentioned was the road use fund and then you have the lost money, the local option sales. I think there's at least one other fund or component I'm missing. Is there another one beyond those two?
They go back into the road use fund. We have Central Garage that generates revenue from the outside departments that's put back in since we have expenditures from that.
But those two essentially, lost money and then the road use fund?
Right.
Okay.
What about revolving fund?
Well, that's different. I mean, we'd get into a whole budget discussion on how the debt service is done, depending on where we're at, on how we pay that back. Now you're starting to get into some of the sewer revenue funds.
Council, are there any individual... Mark, go ahead.
Just out of curiosity, do you have any plans in the upcoming future for the area around Wilson School? I know driving around the backside of that, end of the sides of it, I mean, you might as well be driving through the streets of Iraq because it's so terrible to drive back in there. So anywhere over, and all of those side streets really are in pretty rough condition. Do you have any plans in the foreseeable future for that area?
That's one where we just kind of have to balance it from year to year. You know, we need to look in those areas as we do in so many others. Is that on next years? No. In the next five, yes.
Chair and I have a comment to make. Larry, I've been around council long enough to kind of know how some of this works. And you said that the gas tax money was rolled into the road use fund, basically. And on this list of projects we have here, you have listed, the funding listed here. I know that the road use fund, the Expanded Street Program is paid out of the road use fund, correct?
Yes.
What other of these projects are paid, is any of the other funds on the road use fund, are these projects paid for out of that fund?
If you look down under, what we try to divide them, since the focus seemed to be on are they overlay versus full depth reconstruction? Hamilton Street, for instance, will be coming out of the Expanded Road Use Program. Between that and the ones that's listed under the top section, you have a little over a million dollars worth of streets. And that's one of the things, back to the road use, and that's where we'd have to get in. And I'd probably have to have Bob Jay come up and go into the actual details of what all our public works cost. If we were not transferring in the million dollars from the lost fund and in the other revenue, which is roughly 634,000, we wouldn't be doing those programs at all. We'd have to look at, do we even have enough to support the crews?
Well, that's what I thought. And I guess, and this doesn't go to any one person, I guess I'm just a little disappointed because when that gas tax passed, I think we had a consensus from the previous council that we would at least be able to track an increase in the amount of road overlays that we would do. Now, I know we have a different council now and we never did take official action on that, but it was kind of the understanding that we would be able to track that because I think a lot of the concerns that we felt from citizens was that we weren't going to put that money toward increasing the overlays that we could do with the criteria and rationale that you presented, pending the sewer separation and the use and the alligator cracking on streets, that being an example and taking into account. We were kind of wanting to see some additional backroads, like Councilmember Rod had mentioned, an increase in some of those small overlays done. And I think when we go throwing it into road use without at least tracking and being able to say, hey, these are an additional 400 or 300,000 dollars worth of overlays or street construction, full depth construction projects, I think we see here again, we're taking tax dollar money, throwing it into a general fund and then not being able to say, hey, we did this much more stuff. Are we able to track that? I mean, are we ever going to see where we've actually done more streets?
Well, actually, I think it shows up in this fund now. If you go back to 2003, when we first developed and started the Expanded Street Repair Program, we were targeting 300,000.
Right.
You know, this loan was about a million dollars. So there's a $700,000 increase since we started the program. I mean, you could easily pick any of these streets that add up to 400,000 and say, these are in addition. If we hadn't got it, you would see this reduced.
We have had years though where the Expanded Street Program has been more than 300,000.
It depends. Sometimes when we let it, we might join two fiscal years together. It's kind of, because it stays in that fund balance and it isn't something that is moved out, it could be done in two, two construction seasons might be condensed into one or half of one into another full one. It kind of depends on where we're at with our workload, how we get it out on the street, when we get it out. So there's a lot of factors that have to be...
Yeah. And we discussed that too. I mean, you've taken me, I'm not in a lot of this, you know, when people ask, I said, well, there's a lot of things to take into account, like is that going to have to be retore up for sewer separation? What other streets, you know, like the cul-de-sac you shown there, that's just gravel. I mean, there's priority worst first is something I've always been, you know, always promoted. But, you know, I just want to see when that gas tax money came through, that was an additional amount of money we had injected that we didn't have before. You know, we had budgeted some of these and already had planned on doing some of this. So I was really hoping to see, we could say and pinpoint and record and document, hey, we've actually done X amount of extra streets, linear feet of overlays because we have this extra money.
We can actually do that. I mean, it's all just blended into one program here, but you can, we can do that and format it in that.
I think it'd be helpful to the citizens to see that that money actually went to streets and an improvement, whether it's full depth reconstruction or overlays, that would be great if we could do that.
See, one of the things that I think get lost over time is that streets have a defined life, you know, useful, depending on, and that kind of goes into life cycle of the different types of streets. You know, that's what we have to look at is bang for the buck. How much could we get covered? You know, if, depending on the base, your asphalt street can last 15, if you really have a good base, you're talking 20 years. So some of these streets, and that's what we did in our book when we was kind of requested, and it was in an interesting project internally where we went back 20 years and pulled together the information that we had internally. You can see that a lot of these streets that were overlaid have now reached that 20-year mark. So it's not like you, I mean, do you do these heavily traveled areas again or do you continue and...
Do ones that have never been done?
Right. And that's the problem when I say that really to catch up, we should be doing $8 million and we simply cannot do it. So it's really, we're getting behind in a sense.
With the crack repair, because you know, when you do these overlays and the full depth reconstruction, you go back and do the crack repair, the PCC and the hot mix overlay. You do more, the more streets you do, the more you have to add into that budget to fill the cracks right and extend the life?
We actually target on our preventative maintenance, a fixed amount, which is typically 50,000.
Because after a certain amount of time, you don't...
Right. You get to a point in the condition of a mat that it doesn't make sense to put any more money into it. That's where I was saying, if you can catch a street at the right place, you can extend its life. If you wait too long, then there's no purpose.
Okay.
You know, you can get another five years and then go clear to full depth.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Good discussion. Any other questions from council? We had one person who filled out a sheet.
Here is Branch Concerns.
Okay, well, we'll take that. Let's do this as a, is that a street concern, Denny? I assume it's your, why don't you come on up and identify yourself, and as long as Larry's here, we can respond a little bit. Not sure we'll give you an answer you want, but we'll at least try to respond to it. So introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Denny Whitson, I live in Harrows Branch. And I'd like to know how come our street wasn't repaired after the sewer went through? Every place else in town that there was sewer separation, sewer work, sewer, whatever, the streets were put back better than they were before they were tore up. Our street had seal coat on it. We run right along the edge of Harrows Branch Creek. It had seal coat on it, so when the creek would flood, the dirt would come out. Period of time with driving on it and rain, it would wash that off, and we had a street again. Clarence Street's the same way, it was seal coat. Well, I understand that's been outlawed by the DNR, PA, or whomever determined that that was no good anymore. So now we have simply mud. And simply mud is unacceptable. I would think when you bid the bid on this sewer, that there would have been money put in there to replace that street as good or better than it was before it was destroyed. I bid jobs all the time. If I'm going to do a job and I have to run equipment across a neighbor's property, I bid in repairing that property as it was before I entered there. And that's the way it should be. That's good business. If I didn't do that, I wouldn't be in business a year. And this street, I tried pulling my loader up over the hill when they were replacing the tubes at the end of Summit. They had the street blocked. I had the loader on the trailer on the back of my dump truck. I tried going up Clarence, I ended up in the middle of the hill, dual spinning, and I was sliding backwards, and I finally got it jackknifed before I went off the ditch into the creek. And I'm going to tell you what, you ride a dump truck with a loader on the back of it backwards downhill when you have no control?
Risky.
That's not fun. That's not what I pay taxes for. The city's been working up through my property, through the other people's property, all the way up to North McDonald area, so they can inspect the sewers. I have no problem with that. I think that's a great idea. They should have that. And they have ran in and out there all winter long, tracking mud out. I've gravelled my section of that drive for over 15 years. When the sewer came through, they dug it up, they put no base back down, they put three-quarter inch roadstone in it, and they tamped it. I watched them. That's no base for a street. It's no base for a driveway. It's my understanding that there was money allotted to put rock on those roads. Well, rock's not going to do it. It's going to have to be something other than rock, because when the creek comes out, deposits its three inches of mud, that rock is gone. The grader came through today and graded the road, which we appreciate. He's been in there several times. I talk to Kevin all the time, and they come in and they grade it. But there's nothing to grade. It's dirt. After this storm comes in tonight, I invite all of you to wash your car and come out to my house. I'll have coffee in the morning if you want to do that. I suggest you bring a four-wheel drive, because you're going to be swamped. And I just think it's wrong, and so do my neighbors. We live up there, we pay taxes. I think we deserve more than a mud road. I drive all over this county. I can drive my truck all over this county and not get muddy, and as soon as I hit my little section of Harrows Branch, it ain't nothing but mud. That's unacceptable. And I do invite you to come out after it snows and rains, drive up to my house. They come out from mowing back there or working back there. I've had dump trucks, city dump trucks running in and out there all winter. They track mud from back in the timber, and they deposit it right between my house and my garage and my driveway, which I get to drive through, walk through, get in my truck, out of my truck. And Kevin pretty well took care of me on that. And I understand that's going to happen. When you're working with dirt, you're going to have that. I work with dirt, I know. I don't have a problem with that. He's been very fair with that. But the section from Clarence to Summit, there's no ditches. It's lower than everything else around, so when the creek comes out, it just turns into another creek bed. I just think that's wrong. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, and you know that we did drive it, and my car got quite?
Talked to you.
Yeah, my car got pretty muddy too, so I appreciate your struggle. Thank you. Do you want to make any comments, Larry, or you want to just pull off?
Well, I guess we can address it. My understanding was that our crew has been proactive on anything as far as adding gravel. When we did replace the sanitary lineup through there, you do have to evaluate the length of the road, the cost of the infrastructure, and a gravel road is an option. It wouldn't make, in my view, a lot of sense to put in, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars to put a paved road in, an area that serves very little traffic as far as vehicle volume.
It's back to Matt's question about how do you select city streets then? I mean, you're back to that issue.
Sure. The gravel is replaced frequently after rain events. His description of that area, it does flood the roads, of course, it does exceed the capacity of that creek. I mean, ultimately, that's why it floods and overtop Second Street. That's some of the things that we're trying to do with the drainage structures up in the upper reaches of Harrows Branch, that it's always been an option and has always been a challenge actually of trying to find some way to fund additional structures to decrease that issue. But when you have a basin area, and I think it's roughly 1,000 acres, maybe it was closer to 1,200 total, you do have a lot of tendencies on the heavy rain events to have basically high volumes of water.
Can I comment on it?
Sure.
Is it possible, Denny mentioned, water coming on top of the street between Clarence and Summit, is it possible to ditch that and keep that water off the street surface?
Well, I'm not real sure we can increase the capacity of that ditch. I mean, you're kind of limited, not only at some of the drive crossings, but the box culvert on Second. I mean, when you exceed the capacity of that, which is roughly 1,000 cubic feet per second, and it tops Second Street, it's going to back up. I mean, that's the whole problem.
But the water gets there anyway, whether it travels on top of the street, travels in the ditch.
Correct.
I just thought maybe you could help the situation, put down some bigger, bigger material for a base, and then when it gets fairly stable, maybe do something?
We've put a lot of base down, and we've put a lot of rock down over there. When it, when it does flood, it does deposit, you know, the finer materials that's in the floodwater, and we routinely add gravel.
Hopefully, when you get those ponds built and everything said and done, they won't have that creek come out and wash dirt up on the street like Denny's talking about. I just thought if it could be ditched and water controlled, and then in the future, put down a more solid base of bigger material, because he's right, it was seal coat, and it wasn't too bad before.
I imagine it's flooded for years.
Well, it has because of the extreme amount of water coming down there, and the creek wouldn't handle it. Yes, you're right. But when this is?
One of the things we were looking at to raise that road, then we'd get into some private property and have to raise in behind Welch's property, that's something we'd have to look at as a project, but then it escalates cost-wise.
Any other questions or comments? Couple of comments I want to make. We'll have a RagBri meeting on Thursday, March 31st, 5 to 7, at the Bridgeview Center, and that is open to the public, and we'd like to invite all the public to come and participate in that. That'll be a chance for you to sign up for anything you're interested in doing on RagBri. I think we have a regular scheduled meeting on April 5th. Is there anything you can get to us if you have any issues or concerns, Andy, or to Amanda? Is there anything else that you want to bring up? Okay.
Your Honor, I have one quick thing. I'm not sure if this is appropriate time to mention it or not. You're all giving me that look like, oh, what's he going to say? I was just going to report on, and let the council be aware of Alicia Howe and her intention on planting some wildflowers in the medians. I think most of you are all aware, but I don't know if the public was aware, that Indian Hills instructor Alicia Howe, who's got a background in earth science, had approached myself in the Parks Department about an option of beautifying Atoma by planning or having some test beds in some of the medians in Atoma to try and help beautify the city. And if successful, she was thinking about talking to the Parks Board and Parks Director Ratchi about doing some of the down ramps too, and in conjunction with that, maybe adding some trees, you know, in the future. And I didn't know, that passed the Parks Board last year to do some test beds and stuff. And that may be coming up and some stuff we might try to do this spring, and Larry said he might do some traffic control for that. I was unaware or unsure whether that should be something that should come before the council for some official action, or that's something that, you know, we could talk about during a work session possibly coming up. That would be the, I guess, to the council or?
Mr. Mayor, my thought on that, and first of all, I commend the Councilman Dalby, and also Gene Ratchi's done a really good job in, quite frankly, putting together with Ms. Howe, a series of plantings, which I think will add tremendously to beautification of those intersections. What I would do, my recommendation here from the staff perspective, is put it in front of council for general consideration, in light of the fact I don't believe we're requesting any city funds. I would look at really as an administrative matter, not having to come to council. Further approval, but we'll certainly want to get the pictures in front of council.
Your Honor? I have one more thing. I just found out today, this is not a big deal, but yet it's kind of neat. We've got a lot of company coming. The fountain in the Greater Atoma Park in the trout pond is now going to be red, white, and blue. I just think that's pretty neat. It's not lit yet, it was put in today, as soon as the electricians get it wired up again. Just a good attraction.
And it also indicates somebody that has been very persistent, and we finally did get a chance to implement that because of his persistence.
Yes, Sam Jackson, a local Latum one, retired county employee, retired bus driver. He's talked about that for two years, he'll be very happy.
Okay, hearing none, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Schieb?
Yes.
I have 6:32.
Thank you.